The statistics surrounding drug-related crime in this nation and our city are staggering. We know that addiction is not a problem that we can arrest our way out of. Currently, there are 23 million Americans living in recovery each day. The Waterbury Police have now begun working side by side with recovery coaches to assist survivors of overdoses and connect them with care. If you want to learn more or you want to be connected with an overdose response technician, come see me. I'm Fernando Spagnolo, the Waterbury Police Chief, and we're here to help.
Recording in progress.
All right. You stand here, Mr. President. Okay. Are we all on the camera, Dave?
We are.
All right, good. Okay, everybody. We're honored and very proud to swear on a new alderman tonight, Mr. Ivan Roman. Ivan is born here in the city of Waterbury, raised in both the Brooklyn and Town flat section, currently resides in the South End near Holyoke. He's attended school here in Waterbury, Barnard Elementary, West Side Middle School, and Keener Technical High School. Ivan received a bachelor's degree in journalism and a minor in psychology from Central Connecticut State University, went on to pursue a master's degree in public relations, corporate communications from Sacred Heart University. Congratulations. Ivan has worked seven years in nonprofit sectors for mental health, Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, residential group homes, foster care worker in family and children's aid, caseworker for group therapy and community mental health affiliates, and caseworker for family therapy at Hartford Behavioral Health. Currently, Ivan works at Department of Social Services determining the public eligibility for state services such as staff, cash assistance, medical assistance, and will have been there for four years this coming October. Ivan's a recipient of the Society of Professional Journalists Award for Best Feature Story in 2013, and recipient of the Leadership and Adaltsment Performance in 2018 from the Department of Social Services. Wow. How old are you? That's a lot, 31 years, Ivan. Anyways, we're very, very pleased, and I'm very grateful to former state representative that played as current state representative, Jerry, geez, I'm sorry, for having brought you to us and of course our current Alderman Sandra Martinez-McCarthy. I saw your resume and your list of accomplishments, and I'm just so delighted to have someone who's been so active in his community to be on our team. So you're obviously taking the place of Alderman Cotto, but she had to resign unfortunately because she moved from the district, but we have high hopes for you and we're really a believer in homegrown people and you've given your young life to the city of Waterbury, and particularly I'm proud of you for your attention to the mental health and addiction service portion of what you're doing in your special life. So I can't tell you how proud we are to have you. So we have our president of the Board of Aldermen, Almer Pernuski, here. We have Representative Reyes here, and where is Jerry? Oh, up there. And I'd like you to raise your right hand, please. You, Ivan Roman, having been chosen Board of Aldermen for the city of Waterbury, you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue a citizen thereof, that you are not subject to any of the disqualifications holding said office enumerated in the charter of said city, and that you will faithfully discharge duties of said office to the best of your skills and abilities to help you God. I do. The city of Waterbury extends very best wishes to you on this horrible occasion and expenses, expresses the hope for continued service. I have to excuse my glasses are fogged up, but I can't read it right. And we're back in the mask, though, and next time I need bigger fog. Deep heart of congratulations. Thank you. Well, I'd like you to say a few words. Camera, this very unusual swearing in.
That's okay. I would like to thank Mayor O'Leary for giving me an amazing opportunity to join a board that features incredible people of both the Democratic and Republican parties, work hard to create a thriving city. As O'Leary mentioned, I've worked in mental health for numerous years, and in doing so, I've learned that we are all given a set of tools in life from our parents' past down to theirs, which helps us succeed in life, but there's also my personal belief that we can continue to add on to those tools all by the environments that we live in, neighborhoods, communities, and the overall city that we live in. So what better way for me to continue on that journey of well-being for the individuals in the city than learning about the changes that happen right here in City Hall? I always admired a wise man's quotes, and one of my favorite quotes from this wise person was, "Leadership and learning are indispensable to each other." I again want to say this is an amazing opportunity. I look forward to working with my colleagues. I look forward to representing the 5th District, which features beautiful diversity and compelling stories yet to be told in my community. I hope to expand my skill set, but as well, I look forward to being a positive contribution to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. President?
I just want to say congratulations to Ivan. Obviously, as you can tell just listening to him, he's going to be a great fit for this board. Looking at his resume, talking with folks that know him, my own conversations with them, I just think he's got a lot of really good ideas. He and Sandy are going to be a formidable team on behalf of the 5th District, and I look forward to working with him over the next several years. So congratulations and good luck.
Thank you. Alderman Martinez-McCarthy, now off the floor. Camera, the mic, I'm calling.
Hello. I just want to thank the mayor and Terry and Victor and all, everyone for being here, and I'm looking forward to working together with Ivan, you'll see how Alderman, Board of Aldermen works.
We are. Yeah, two things. Last one, our latest Representative Reyes.
It's not a privilege to be here with our endorsed candidates for the 5th District. I am pleased to see you involved in the 5th District, and yes, you can hit around ahead. It's a very diverse district, and it's changing and going every day. So I am thrilled and excited. Mayor, thank you for endorsing Mr. Roman. We are looking forward to working with this administration as we've always had in the past and go forward in this primary on the 14th of September and then go fight winning November. Thank you and welcome forward.
Thank you. So we really are very, very excited to have you here. You know, one of the things that has been very important over the last 10 years, new concepts of Alderman by district. So it was a hard fought battle for those opposing such change in the government. It took forever to come into place, but at the end of the day, we feel it's a system that we're still trying to figure out the pluses and hoping that it's all of the things that we hoped Alderman by district would, that the argument was in favor for would come to fruition. Let me just say this, having someone like you, Alderman Martinez-McCarthy representing your district, means an awful lot for that fight for Alderman by district. You're homegrown, you live in the district, you'll fight for your constituents in your district, and as you know and Representative Reyes, that's a delegation, very much aware, we certainly have spent an inordinate amount of time, the quality of life in your district over the last 10 years, particularly millions and millions of dollars in investments into that area. The demolition of Anamet, the 313 Mill Street demolition, and now construction of the Little League Field that we're very, very proud of, but it goes much further. The quality of life changes in the district. I've always said, and Jerry, Gray and Sandra, you know, in our opinion, the South End has been neglected for a long time. I don't want to say intentionally neglected because the city went through so many difficult times over the last 40 or so years. So what happens when you go through difficult times, particularly financial difficulties and then leadership difficulties in the mayor's office, things get forgotten, things get neglected, and the South End District and parts of the North End District are certainly prime examples of that. But you know, now I think we are really turning the page on some really successful initiatives, investments, but most importantly, people working together. And then thank, listening to each other, not always a great, listening to each other, trying to find a common ground, common ground to support. And Ivan, I tell you, I think you're doing this really well. So good luck, the best of luck to you, and we're proud of you for all of your accomplishments. I'm really proud of you for your education, all the things that you've done, and your journalism degree, I thought that was great. So we're going to have some fun, and so for now, folks who are listening, we've got a public hearing set at 6:50. And so if you do, please stay tuned and stay on. Love to have you stay on and listen to the presentation on the out-of-state plates. So thank you. Thank you all. A few more minutes.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. We will call to order the public hearing for this evening. If anybody who is on, when you're not speaking, if you could mute yourselves because we are hearing some conversation.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. So this is the public hearing scheduled for 6:50 PM for this evening. It's the amendment to the Civil Enforcement Ordinance, and the purpose is to receive public comment on the proposed amendment that would clarify that any violation of the Code of Ordinances is subject to the citation process, and it would permit the city to impose a fine of $250 on the owner of any motor vehicle who improperly fails to register that vehicle with the Connecticut Department of Motor Vehicles, except that in accordance with Public Act, no fine would be imposed on a first-time violator who presents proof of registration subsequent to the violation but prior to the imposition of a fine. So with that, anyone who wishes to be heard on this particular item should have called in. We'll begin calling you back. There's a five-minute limit. I'll give you a one-minute heads up, and please state your name and address for the record when you begin speaking. If we can get our first caller on the line. Are you there, caller?
Yes, I am here. Hi. Okay, I'm getting a lot of feedback here.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, Martin Spring, 1400 Merritton Road. I'd like to make some comments on the public hearing today, amendment to Civil Enforcement Ordinance for out-of-state plates. As I said before at the last meeting, I'm totally agreement of this because, you know, you have people coming in here and they work for the city, or they live here, or whatever they do here, and they send their kids to school, and they utilize our roads and, you know, everything here in the city of Waterbury and different agencies, what have you, and they don't register their cars in the city of Waterbury, and I think that hurts the tax base an awful lot, where people, in my opinion, just cannot afford to let this happen anymore because, you know, with all due respect, you know, we live here in the city of Waterbury. I lived here majority of my life, except when I was away for a while and I came back home, and, you know, it was always, I always paid my taxes. We always paid our bills, and we always got our cars registered in the city of Waterbury. And I just think it's not fair to many people like us who really pay attention and work here and love the city of Waterbury and want to contribute to the city because, you know, a lot of people complain about the roads and the potholes and everything else, and if everybody paid their fair share of our taxes, if you will, maybe the mill rate would be lower, and the mayor and administration and you guys on the Board of Aldermen would be able to, you know, lower the mill rate or maybe give us some kind of reimbursement on our taxes. But I don't know how many people are out there with unregistered cars. I know Channel 8 was here doing a story on it and various other media outlets, and I jump from Waterbury and I still see them. So I'm 100% behind, you know, making sure people get their cars registered in the city of Waterbury and also make sure they're insured and, you know, we worry about liability because to me, it's, you know, it's very important. We have to do this, and I want to commend DG for his valid efforts and members of the Board of Aldermen. So I'm asking members of the Board of Aldermen in unison, both Republican and Democrat, to work on this, to work with the administration and support this amendment of Civil Enforcement Ordinance. And I'm sorry, I'm getting a lot of feedback on my phone. I don't know why, a lot of delays, but I can't wait to meet in person. But anyways, and this is something that's new, that's got to be done, and, you know, it's also says no fine would be imposed on a first-time violator who presents proof of registration, okay? And to, so this is something that I think should be done, but and people who fail to register, this is the sticker that I, I'm not happy with, and I mentioned this to other members of the Board of Aldermen. I think the fine is a little too excessive, $250, especially now where we just had COVID and people trying to get back to work. A lot of businesses are trying to get back to work, but I don't want to sound like I'm contradicting myself. I still, if I was on the Board of Aldermen, I would vote in favor of this, but I would not vote in favor of the $250 fine. I think members of the Board of Aldermen should re-discuss this and maybe turn around and see if you can lower the fine, but I thank you for you guys working and all the great work you do, and I do support this. Thank you.
Okay. We have one more caller, so the next caller. Caller, are you there?
Good evening. Yes, good evening, Mr. President. My name is Thomas Pelletier. I live at 112 Cockroach Street. I'm calling in support of the amendment to the enforcement of out-of-state plates. I want to commend Alderman DG Van Carlo and also State Representative DG Van Carlo for his work on trying to help us in the city and in the state for that matter with this. I know it's been a top priority with this administration, too, and every citizen of the city of Waterbury that I've spoken to supports this amendment. You know, we talk about people paying their fair share in the city and surrounding towns, and this is just one element that's going to help us, you know. We are going to be, it looks like our students and everybody continue to grow in the city of Waterbury, and we're going to need more of a tax base to help out with this. So I think it's only right to give our officers in our city any means necessary to collect taxes that they would not have gotten, and this is just one way of doing it. I also want to commend Alderman DG. This isn't all about a money grab. This is about having people pay their fair share. Everybody wants to come live here, you know, because they see that the city is changing and it's safe, and we have jobs coming here, and, you know, and if you want to come and live here, you have to pay your fair share, and I would hope that we could come together bipartisanly and pass this because State Representative DG Van Carlo worked on a bipartisan effort to get the state to pass this bill to help cities and towns. So I think we should work as bipartisan effort on this. So I would ask that you guys pass this amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that being the last speaker, I will recognize, I know we have Mayor O'Leary with us. He wants to speak to this as well. So, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Neil O'Leary, 137 West Ridge Road, City of Waterbury. I think the reason why I've chosen to speak is it's so important, I think, for the taxpayers of the city of Waterbury to recognize the efforts of Officer Michael DG O'Van Carlo, also State Representative DG O'Van Carlo of the 74th, who single-handedly spearheaded this legislation. But once he put the legislation together with the rest of our delegation, which I'm so very proud of, all of them, honestly, he interpreted it through, and it was, don't forget, he's a brand-new freshman state representative, and he worked it through the House and he worked it through the Senate with the support of the Speaker of the House, Matt Ritter. And I have to tell, make sure that everyone understands and recognizes what an incredible job he did as a freshman state representative to get this bill to come to fruition. I disagree with the previous speaker. I think $250,000 is not enough. I think fines would be more, but at the end of the day, I truly believe that, as you all know, when you drive around the city of Waterbury, you see the number of out-of-state plates here within the city, and I think it's imperative that people recognize and understand how vitally important it is. They just moved the microphone, so has everyone been able to hear me or no?
Yes, you've been coming through. It's just much clearer now that they moved it.
Okay. So again, and I apologize for that. I didn't realize we were having a technical issue, but, you know, it's imperative for the constituents, the taxpayers, the residents of the city of Waterbury to recognize and understand that it was through the efforts of freshman State Representative Michael DG O'Van Carlo and police officer here in the city of Waterbury. You might remember that when he was an alderman, before he was a state representative. This has been a hot topic issue for him from the moment he was elected to the Board of Aldermen. So kudos to him for getting the job done. Kudos to the delegation, particularly the rest of our state reps and our Senator Joe Hartley for getting it done with the assistance and support of our Speaker of the House, Matt Ritter. You know, we are doing a record-breaking pavement program right now. We're spending $8 million paving more roads than ever in a single season in the city's history, and, you know, we need to recognize and understand that our, as Tom Pelletier pointed out, that our roads have been, you know, when you live in New England, you're subject to the weather conditions, and our roads need to be repaved, repaired, and replaced. And so everyone who drives on the roads, everyone who's a resident of the city of Waterbury and drives on the road should pay their fair share in taxes for their motor vehicle. And so I'm really delighted, and the best part of this legislation that was a compromise, and it was a great compromise, and that's how legislation gets passed, is that if you get a summons for driving an out-of-state plate vehicle, you have a 30-day window to get the vehicle registered, and if you get the vehicle registered, you don't pay the fine. And so I think that's an amazing compromise that is fair not only to the residents of the city of Waterbury, but also fair to the people who are moving into the city and may or may not have found the time to get to the Department of Motor Vehicles. So I think it's a great piece of legislation. I congratulate everyone that was involved in getting it done, and I also am very grateful for all the people who have chosen to move into the city, particularly our friends from New York as a result of the COVID pandemic. As we all know, the property values have gone through the ceiling, and we have been enjoying a new demographic of folks from New York and other states as well over the last year into the city, and we're grateful to have the legislation in place now to make sure everyone recognizes and remembers that they must register their vehicles here in the state of Connecticut in the city of Waterbury. So thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to everyone involved, and great job done by all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And with that, there's no further speakers for the public hearing, so we'll close the public hearing. And it being 7:05, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, August 16, 2021. And if everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a silent prayer.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Brunelli.
Present.
No, he's on because I've seen him.
Alderman McCavalo.
Present.
Alderman DG O'Van Carlo.
Here.
Can you all hear Mike?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Alderman DG O'Van Carlo.
Here again.
We didn't hear you, so.
Didn't hear you the first time. Alderman Dorsel.
Here.
Alderman Hunter.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
I am here.
Alderman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Matthews.
He's present. He's here. He just sat here.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Nujame. He's not here. Alderman Roman.
Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Weaver.
Here.
Alderman Zimmerman.
Present.
Alderman Pernuski.
Here.
14 present, 1 absent.
Thank you. And I just, for the record, will note that Alderman Nujame reached out to me earlier today to indicate that he's at a function out of state that had been rescheduled, so that's why he's not here this evening. It was initially scheduled for a different time. So with that, we will go to public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the board, you should have called in. We'll start calling you back. Please state your name and address for the record. There's a five-minute limit, and I'll give you a one-minute heads up. Get the first caller on the line. Caller, are you there?
Hello?
Go ahead, Martin.
Oh, yeah. Am I on?
You are.
Yeah. Okay, I'm on. I don't know. I hear Paul talking over here, and I hear feedback. I'm on the Board of Aldermen right now?
Yes, you are.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you. Well, Martin Spring, again, 1400 Merritton Road. You know, I know the mayor was just on, and I didn't know he was going to come on, and I just want to let him know that I do support the new out-of-state ordinance for the plates, but I just, you know, recognize that, you know, this is a 30-day window or 90-day window, I guess it is, and I should have read the whole legislation, but still, I still think it's a little bit too much because of COVID, and, you know, people in Waterbury don't really have a lot of money. But that being said, I only have a few minutes, so I did want to talk about a few things here. Brenda Lizcardo, she was on the Waterbury Rights Commission, and I know she's no longer representing us as a liaison. I have to tell you right now, Brenda did a fantastic job, her and many other commissioners, especially writing up some new ordinances, if you will, and also making a good presentation as far as the resolution and with other commissioners, and I just think it's a good thing that what she did. And so that being said, did I just like to say, I know you people have that on the agenda today. It's under Item 3, submission from the Human Rights Commission to the Board of Aldermen for your review and declaring racism a public health crisis. I know the state already did this, but I mean, there's a lot of towns and municipalities who are recognizing this. So I think it's my job as chairman of the Waterbury Rights Commission to move this forward, and that's what we talked about at our last meeting. By the way, any of you members of the Board of Aldermen, you're more than welcome to come on our board and visit us, and when the time comes, we can all meet together face to face. And by the way, we're still waiting for somebody to replace Brenda on the Board of Aldermen, and hopefully you'll find a good candidate for us. Okay. Okay, I don't have a lot of time, so I did want to say this. I noticed a new draft that we got that's been presented to you, and it's a finalized resolution presented by the Waterbury Human Rights Commission. I'd like to see that go to the various agencies throughout the City of Waterbury, like the NAACP, community clubs, adversity committee, Waterbury Neighborhood Council, Board of Health, Board of Ed Members, Waterbury Police Department, obviously Chief Inspector Nola, Department of Education, Waterbury Fire Department Chief and Staff, excuse me, all commissions and boards, all department heads, including the Mayor's Office, Corporation Council, WDC, news media outlets. I'm asking this entire Board of Aldermen to set up a special committee and work in unison with the Waterbury Rights Commission. Now, the reason why I bring that up is I understand that we're probably going to go out and do a lot of this on our own, but I was hoping for the agencies that are connected with city government, maybe the Board of Aldermen could work with us on that so we could send out our updated, brand-new resolution, the version of it, okay? Also, I have something else that I wrote here, and I wrote this a while ago. This is back in February 4th of '21. Says, "I, Martin F. Spring, a long-life resident of Waterbury personally acknowledges, unfortunately, there are some forms, present issues pertaining to systemic and blatant discrimination in our entire city that can result in a major public health crisis. If we just ignore this and nothing is done, which needs to be addressed ASAP by all elected officials, including members of the Board of Aldermen, they include racial disparities, racial injustice in all races and ethnicities, no matter what form of race, creed, color, sexual, gender one may be. So in conclusion, let's all work together as Americans to resolve this important issue." I don't know how much time I got left, Mr. President.
One minute, Mr. Spring. One minute.
Okay, one minute. Okay, it sounded like somebody at home telling me, "One minute, get off the phone." Listen, I really can't wait until we get down there, and I want to, I know the mayor is there. I want him to know that Martin Spring, Chairman of the Waterbury Human Rights Commission, we have an open-door policy. He can come before our board, and so can you anytime. We're looking forward to working with him and his administration, Corporation Council, and many other agencies. So if you guys can work with us to set some kind of committee up or make some kind of recommendations of what you can do to help us, because right now, as you guys know, that we don't have any, any way that we can afford to go out and buy things because we don't even have a budget. I brought this up at one time, and maybe in the future I could read about that budget that I would like to see proposed for next fiscal year coming up. And I just want to say, I, I want to thank you, members of the Board of Aldermen, and anytime you want to call me about the Waterbury Rights Commission, give me a call at home. And I thank you, Paul, for everything you've done. Thank you very much. Goodbye.
Do we have other callers? One more. Hi, caller, are you there?
Good evening. Thomas Pelletier, 112 Cackridge Street, Waterbury. I'm calling tonight also to commend the mayor and you guys on the, the mayor brought it up about the paving and milling that's going on in the city. It's probably one of the most aggressive paving projects that any administration has done so far, and I want to commend them on that. And I also want to commend this mayor, you know, we're not just milling streets anymore. This administration's been committed to fixing infrastructure before paving, and we've seen that time and time again. So I think that you guys and this administration should be commended, and I think that our cars will thank us all for it. Secondly, on your agendas this evening, I would just ask that you pass a lot of the money items. I'm not going to go through it line by line. I know that there's water cleaning and other things. They're mainly what we definitely need in the city. And lastly, I just wanted to address that resolution. Me personally, I don't think there's a health crisis out there. I think that this administration has done everything it, and it's possible to hire more minorities in the city. We've all come together as citizens, you know, to work with every ethnicity in the city, trying to, whether it's cleaning neighborhoods, whether it's addressing blighted issues, you know, we've taken down countless blighted buildings, you know, working together, whether it's with COVID, you know, getting people vaccinated. And especially in the last year, I've seen people from all ethnicity groups trying to address this pandemic that is not only affecting the City of Waterbury, but affecting the state of Connecticut and the country. You know, people aren't, you know, saying, oh, we need to help this person or that person because they might be one ethnicity. They, we're all people. We're all, we all bleed the same blood, and we all work together as a city. So, and you see it everywhere you go in the city. So to say that there's a health crisis, I don't believe so. Do we need to do more to, you know, help ourselves as individuals and, and overcome hatred that might exist in the country and, in certain parts of Connecticut? Yes, we should come together, but I don't think that this needs to be a health, a health crisis, a health crisis in the dictionary and, and what I've looked is basically what we're going at, what's going on with COVID. So I think that we should all continue to work together as citizens and continue to make the City of Waterbury the, the better place that it's becoming, and continue to work as all citizens. That's what we are in Waterbury. We all work together. So thank you, Mr. President, and have a good evening.
That being, if the next item on the agenda, there'd be no further speakers, would be the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of Monday, July 19th, 2021. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Lopez.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded to approve the minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the minutes as presented, and a no vote will be to disapprove them. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the minutes are approved. Before we resolve ourselves into the Committee of the Whole, just two items. One is that Item Number Six on the agenda relating to the Assistant School Inspector has been requested to be withdrawn, and that related back to Old Business Number Three. So we'll be withdrawing both New Business Number Six and Old Business Number Three this evening at the request of the, the Director of Human Resources. Also, there's an item that was sent to you earlier today. It's Item Number, it's, the request is to add it on to the agenda. It would be added on as Item Number 14, and it's a grant on behalf of the, the library, Silas Brunson Library. It was just recently awarded to the city, and if it's not returned by August 20th, this, the library will not be able to get the grant. It's an $18,340 grant that is to provide or help provide internet access and high-speed communications for the public libraries. As I'm sure all of you know, for many of our residents here in Waterbury, the library is the way that they can access the internet, and, and trying to survive in the 21st century without being able to access the internet is difficult. So I know it's short notice that it came to us, but given the timing of it and what it's going to do, I would ask that we add this on as New Business Item Number 14. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to add Item Number 14.
Alderman Lopez.
I second.
The motion having been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to add it as Item 14, and a no vote will be not to add it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the item is added as Number 14. With that, Alderman Brunelli, I would entertain a motion that we resolve ourselves into a Committee of the Whole.
So moved.
Alderman Lopez.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and we're sitting as a Committee of the Whole. Item Number One is received and placed on file. It's the resignation from the Board of Aldermen, Alderwoman Cotto. Item Number Two is received and placed on file, and it's the annual reports for the town clerk, the police department, the tax collector, and the city clerk, and all of those are available online. Item Number Three is the submission from the Human Rights Commission that Martin Spring had referenced earlier. It's on our agendas, received and placed on file. You may recall that we had a similar resolution a year ago. At the time, we didn't take it up. We're in the process of the mayor forming a diversity council, which he has done. It's a very well, it's got a, a great group of members on that council. They have been meeting, they have set up subcommittees, and back then, the idea was we would wait for recommendations from them, and I think that that still makes sense, let them do their work rather than duplicating it. And then subsequent to that, the state of Connecticut has passed, as, as Mr. Spring noted, a similar resolution, and they've also created a committee to look at or a commission to look at these items. And so I think it makes sense for us to let those two groups do their work, make their recommendations, and then come back to us with concrete solutions that we can fully act on. So for that reason, it's just a received and placed on file. Item Number Four is a request of new job specification for the watershed and reservoir facility supervisor. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Item Number Four.
Alderman Lopez.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Any questions? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. President. Do we have anyone here to speak to this rule?
What's your, what's your question?
The salary range. Do we have a salary range for this?
Only they've established it yet, but, Mr. Morgan, are you here?
Yes.
So take us through the process of establishing the salary range. I don't think it's been done yet, correct?
Yeah, basically, we would normally look at other towns and municipalities that do this type of work. There aren't a lot of locations that, that do have reservoirs, like not every town has a water authority. So basically, in setting this particular salary, we negotiate with the WMAA, that's our management union, we place it in a salary range equivalent to other similar positions within the city. That's how we determine the salary.
And that hasn't been done yet. That'll be done once we approve the job.
Yeah, we haven't done that yet, but that's typically the way we would set the salary range for positions such as this.
All right, thank you, Scott. And just one more question. When I'm looking at, so we just passed the budget, right, for the next year? When I look at that, is this addition to that? Is it, is it substituting some different roles? How does that process?
This will be position neutral. We, this position is to oversee the reservoir and watershed operators. So this will be position neutral. Rob Langenhour is on, I believe, is on. He could further address that.
Good evening. Hi, good evening. Yes, we have a, currently, we have four vacant positions, and three of them are reservoir area. So it would be a, you know, no backfill type of position if it's an internal award, but we do have vacancies and to fully fund this position. And it would be funded with one of the current already budgeted positions.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, you're welcome. Welcome.
Further discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the job specification, and a no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the job specification is approved. Item Number Five is the request for a new job specification for the Assistant Projects Manager. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Item Number Five.
Alderman Lopez.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Do you have a question?
Alderwoman Lo, yeah, Zimmerman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is to you, right, Scott, probably?
Is it about salary?
Oh, yeah. No, sorry. I saw the salary. So the question is, this is going to be coordinating grants, right? Is this position being funded by a grant as well, or is this going to be a full-time, permanent position on the city's payroll?
This particular position will be a full-time, permanent position in the Engineering Department, but we put this in place with two things in mind. We know that's a lot of, a tremendous amount of grant money coming down. So if, in fact, we, we will, if, in fact, the need arises where we would have to have somebody manage, grant-funded, we would fill these jobs, but they would only live the life of the grant. It wouldn't be put in permanently. So we, the mayor come to recognize as the Dr. Ruffin that with all of the grant money that we're going to be receiving, there needs to be a tremendous amount of oversight and project management, which we don't currently have in place. So this particular position is permanent, full-time. Any, we wanted to reserve the right to fill positions on a, not a permanent, but a more temporary basis through the lives of grants to help us manage those funds and ensure that whatever contracts we have, that there, we receive the goods and services that we're contracted for.
Right, and this is just one position, right?
This is just for one position, correct.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further questions or other discussion? Hearing none, then a yes.
This is the one for Roy Kavanaugh. We also filled one for, for the school.
You know what, Scott? You're still on, you need to mute yourself because we can hear your conversation. There we go. Okay, Item Number Five, hearing no further discussion, a yes vote would be to approve the new job specifications, a no vote would be to disapprove. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the job specification is approved. Item Number Six.
Mr. President, may I, may I just make a comment?
Sure.
I apologize, but the question was asked is, the Assistant Project Manager, is it just one position? It's one position in the engineering office, but I want to make sure that we're clear and transparent on this. There is going to be other people hired as of project managers and assistant project managers as we start to work toward the spend-down on the ARPA grant money. So as you know, education's got about $130 to $140 million just on education side. The city side is about $75 million. So we do not have the people in place to look over those position, excuse me, look over the, the spending of those dollars. It's federal money, and we're going to be very diligent about putting people in place to dot the i's, cross the t's, and make sure the money goes where it's supposed to go and meets the requirements of the grant. So there's a lot of nuances. I'd be happy to talk more about this at another time, but there will be other positions coming. I just didn't want Alderman, Alderwoman Zimmerman or anyone else to say, geez, I thought we filled this last, last month, and, and I was told it was only one position. But I'm warning you all that there will be other positions. The good news is, ARPA pays for all of them. The bad news, or, and the better news is, is that they will only be in, in place for the life of the grant. The ARPA grants need to be spent down by December 31st, 2024, with a completion of projects in December 31st of 2026. So we have a short period of time to spend a lot of money, to get a lot of work done, and we're going to be needing people to oversee those projects. So I just want to be transparent in that and make sure that everyone understands the direction that we're going in. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, does anyone want to reconsider the last approval? No? Okay, good. Then we'll move on to New Business Item Number Seven, which is an agreement in the amount of $4, $4 million with the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services for the Office of Minority. I'm sorry, it's $4,000. But it's a grant with the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. The Office of Minority Health Grant, Advancing Health Literacy for Improved Health Outcomes. I'm sorry, it's $4 million in funding. It's just, there, there's, it's messed up on my, on the agenda that's missing a zero, but it's $4 million in, in funding for the Health Department. So with that, Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Item Number Seven.
Alderman Lopez.
I second.
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion, Alderman Lopez?
I believe we skipped number, item number six.
Item number six is the item that was withdrawn, that was the assistant school superintendent, or the assistant school inspector, then the.
Thank you.
HR had asked for that to be withdrawn, so.
Thank you.
Yep, item number seven then is pending the, the health grant for minority health granted, health literacy, any discussion or any questions on that one? Alderman Lopez?
Yeah, so I apologize, I'm, I'm back on, I, I'm number seven, I will have to actually recuse from voting on item number seven.
Okay, the record will show that Alderman Lopez has recused himself, with that, I guess, is there, can I get another second just to make this clean?
I'll second.
Thank you, I think Alderman Markey got in there, so we'll, the second with Alderman Markey, with that, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the grant with the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, a no vote will be to disapprove, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And the record will reflect that it was unanimous with one recusal for Alderman Lopez, and so the, the grant is approved. Item number eight is an agreement with the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services for the lead hazard reduction grant in the amount of $5 million, and the health, the healthy homes super supplemental grant in the amount of $700,000. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number eight.
Alderman Lopez, are you going to recuse yourself again, or?
No, I'm not, I second.
All right, you can second this one, thank you. The motion having been made and seconded, then, is there any discussion? No, hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the, the grant for lead hazard reduction and healthy homes, a no vote will be to disapprove, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the grant is approved. Item number nine is a three-year contract with Leyden Industries LLC, in the not-to-exceed amount of $313,985.70 for the permanent paving and surface restoration for water-related excavations in the streets of the city of Waterbury. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number nine.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Alderman Lopez?
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. President, I just have a quick question, anyone who may be able to answer this, the way I am reading the documents, this is a three-year contract, it allows 365 days or about a year of warranted work. I am curious if the water department, who is responsible for this grant, this contract, actually has a, a plan in place to conduct surveys, or to figure out if the work has been done properly, considering that we have about a year's worth warranty.
Go ahead, Rob.
Yes, good evening, yes, this is Rob Langenhour, good evening, so the answer is yes, we have a plan in place, we have about 500 road cuts that are currently backlog, and the water department has never had a paving restoration program at all, and this will address the current backlog, we hired a, an inspector several months ago that was approved by the board, that inspector, construction manager, is going to be in charge of paving, so we've already logistically laid out the whole paving route, and there's a process in place that when they do the paving, then the inspection takes place, and then we monitor those patches for a year while their contractor is still here, there's also a third, it's a three-year contract with a fourth year option, so the contractor is obligated, even though they may not come back in that fourth year, to still honor that one-year warranty on year four, so we kind of built that into, to the whole contract, and the contractor that is up for approval tonight has a very good track record of providing road cuts and restorations for utilities, and I think this is a, a very good, positive piece of road restoration for the city of Waterbury and long overdue.
I, I agree with you, just so, just a follow-up question, which I, again, the document shows three years, three different bids, and a fourth year option, but there's no amount for that fourth year.
That fourth year will be held at a third, at the third-year rates, and that's at the city of Waterbury's option.
Thank you, and just because everybody's thinking the same way I'm thinking, looking at the, the bids, obviously, we, we contracted with the lowest bid bidder, the highest bidder was one and a half million compared to about 300,000, why don't you consider, what would you say, what, what is the difference, what, why a $1.2 million difference?
I think it's, I think it's because of the inexperience of some of the bidders that, that were at the pre-bid meeting, that didn't quite understand the concept and what we were trying to accomplish, we were trying to accomplish the backlog, it was very difficult to put 500 road patches in a backlog to get a fair price, because quite frankly, we're not going to have 500 road cuts every single year from the water department, roughly would have about 200, so we bid out that average of 200, so if a, of a good contractor that could come in and do work and perform more work, they could do more, they could make up those patches in year one, so I just don't think they understood the, the concept of what was trying to go on, and again, Leyden Industries has a very good track record, very good references, and has done some outstanding work that I've experienced previously, so I can, you know, kind of attest to it, just from their, from their work ethic and what they performed, their performance in, in my past job. I hope that answers.
Okay, thank you, yes, yes, you did.
And I just want to add one more thing, a couple of the bidders were more, they weren't utility excavation restoration people, more pavers, driveway pavers, something, something along that, that line, so I think it was a little, little difficult for them to try to bid on a, an eight-by-seven patch, as opposed to, you know, like a, a Tilkon, who does by, you know, by the bulk, by the mile.
By the street.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I agree with you, I think experience matters, so thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Further discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. President, just a quick question, is there any relation between Leyden Industries and William Leyden?
I think, I, I can't say for sure, but I think they were brothers at one time, and like a lot of construction companies, that were in business with each other, they no longer are, so I think that's the case, but I, I don't know the other company, but I, I think that's, I think they're brothers.
They were just close in geographically too, so I figured I'd ask, thank you.
Yep.
Further discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the three-year contract with Leyden Industries in the amount of $313,985.70 for the water-related excavation restoration, a yes vote will be to approve, a no vote will be to disapprove, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the contract is approved. Item 10 is an engineer and design agreement with SLR International Corporation to provide design service for restoration and renovation projects for four of the city's fire stations. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number 10.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the engineer and design agreement, a no vote will be to disapprove, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the agreement is approved. Item number 11 is a construction contract for the 2021 sidewalk program between the city of Waterbury and Colona Masonry Concrete and Asphalt Paving LLC, in the amount of Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion? Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve item number 11.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, I'm going to ask if anyone who's on the call, who's not speaking, if you could just make sure you mute yourself because there's background conversations coming through. From somewhere? Thank you. The motion on the table is to approve the construction contract for the sidewalk program with the city in Colona Masonry Concrete, is there any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. President, can anyone answer what the apparent lowest responsible and qualified bidder means, what is apparent, how does that work?
The lowest qualified responsive bidder is the bidder who has the lowest dollar amount, that has fully responded to the, to the, the bid that's out there, so that they can, they, they've said they will do the work, and that they are responsible, and that they have shown, and they have a demonstrated ability to be able to perform the work through looking at other projects that they've done in the past, and also through the, the ability when they're bonding to get a bid bond, because it's typical, if you are unable to perform the, the work, you're not going to be able to get a bonding company to bond you, so they look at all of that, but it's three parts, the lowest number, you have to have fully agreed with everything that's in the bid, that you'll do all of that work, and then you have to have pass muster to someone who has demonstrated your capabilities to do the work, both through prior experience and through your ability to get a bond.
Word apparent threw me off, and I just looked up the definition of the word, do we have the list of vendors for this, how, how many bidders bid on it?
This is Roy's, are you on the call, Roy?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, in this case, there were two bidders who were deemed responsible and qualified, we interviewed both of them, and we made determination that Colona was the lowest responsible bidder, they were in fact the lowest price, and the presentation and the project methodology and the selection board's opinion were much better than that of the other candidate, that's why we were recommending this contractor for the board, for the record, I can also state that this is the contractor, which is also doing the sidewalk and the retaining walls over on West Main Street, which should be starting this week.
Thank you very much, Roy, I appreciate it.
Anything further? Alderman, Alderwoman Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. President, Roy, on the contract, it says various locations totaling, I know you listed all of the different locations that you were going to do the sidewalks, has a determination been made on the other locations that you're going to be doing sidewalks?
No, the final determination has not been made, in fact, the list has changed since we talked last about it, for instance, Eversource Gas has notified us that they're going to be installing gas rigs on Ray Street, so we're going to push back the sidewalk and go after the gas rigs are installed, whenever that may be, that's up to Eversource, we also have a question whether or not Washington Avenue is going to be done based upon some issues we're having at the intersection down there, the other streets which will be added, that list hasn't been selected, as you can imagine, we have a long list of desired items, so what we're going to be doing is prioritizing them and adding them as we develop plans and specifications for the specific locations, and I can tell you that the list is long and they're all over town, and we're going to chip away as many of them as we can under this program.
Is it too late to make recommendations?
It's never too late to make a request.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the contract for the 2021 sidewalk program with the city in Colona, a no vote will be to disapprove, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the contract is approved. Item number 12 is a request seeking consent to the sale of 2628 Yates Avenue between the seller Mary Cipperly and the proposed purchaser, Professional Rentals LLC, for the sale price of $170,000. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number 12.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Alderman Lopez?
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. President, I just have a quick question, just from my understanding here, once the sale is approved, will the next owner have restrictions on the, on usage of the property, under this mortgage, there were restrictions.
Yes.
Does that eliminate, does the sale eliminate those restrictions?
No, the restrictions will continue through the term of the original mortgage, which would take them until June of next year, so the property would have remained restricted if this mortgage weren't being refinanced, would have taken us through June of 2022, and this new mortgage will continue till 2022 with the restrictions, at which point they would have been taken care of anyway. The additional benefit to the city out of this is just, out of that sales price, the city is going to get the delinquent taxes that have not been paid, and, of $44,000, and then there's a mortgage the city has that was in default, so we'll get the 83,000 plus interest, so the city will fundamentally be made whole, the property will go back into useful life, and it will be deed restricted for the original term that was intended.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Markey?
Um, thank you, Mr. President, I just want to make clear that we are going to get back everything, with the fees, the expenses, that 170,000, we'll cover everything that's owed to the city.
The city's going to get out of that amount, $44,000 in back taxes, plus the marshal fees and those expenses will be covered, and $83,000 in the, the arrears on the mortgage plus interest.
Right, I'm just saying, but the interest and expenses and the marshal fees, there's enough in, and again, I don't know how far back it goes, is that all going to be covered by this 170,000?
Linda, you're, you're there, is that, well, that, that makes us completely whole, right?
Yes, and Tina Lubis is also on the line, yes, not only does it make us whole, but there is actually no obligation, if they waited until July, there would be no obligation to pay back that underlying grant, so we're actually receiving more than we would receive if they just simply waited out the period of time of the restrictive covenant, so yes, there's sufficient equity in this property, so that the city will be made whole.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, anything further? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
Thank you, Mr. President, just a quick question, we're trying to, I'd like to know how many mortgages the city does hold, who's a good contact about this topic?
Do you know what we have, or Linda, do either of you know how many of these kinds of mortgages are outstanding?
Uh, off the top of my head, I think on the rental side, there's about maybe 20, I could give you the actual number, you know, if you contact the office.
Okay, and that's the corporate affairs office, or?
Community development.
Community development, thank you, very much.
Any further questions? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the sale of 2628 Yates Street, a no vote will be to disapprove it, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the sale is approved. Item number 13 is a professional service agreement in the amount of $647,750 between the city of Waterbury and National Water Main Cleaning Company, Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number 13.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, are there any questions? Any discussion, Alderman Zimmerman, Alderwoman Zimmerman?
Thank you, Mr. President, and here it says that we had one respondent to this quote, is, it's not a concern, do we have a policy in place to send it back out and see, can anyone talk to this?
My, I'm you.
No, you're good, Mike, go ahead.
I'm muted, yes, I can speak to it, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, you're correct, there was only one respondent to this RFP, the issue is, we don't have time on our side, we are under a, a compliance reporting period where, a deadline where we're going to have to respond back to EPA as far as the efforts and measures that are being taken to reduce the inflow and infiltration into the sewer collection system, so we, when we received just the one response through Jacobs, there was some additional evaluation done to see if the pricing that was received was at least reasonable in comparison to projects that Jacobs has experienced with, where they had bid out work for other municipalities or other sewer systems. or other sewer systems. And the indication from them was that the pricing's, you know, in the ballpark, you know, we don't have the advantage of a competitive comparison to this RFP, but at the end of the day, you know, we believe the rate itself at this time is fair. If it's a little higher than it would have been otherwise, you know, the issue is we need to proceed forward in order to meet the reporting requirements tied to the consent order.
Thank you, Mike.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the professional services agreement between the city and National Water Main Cleaning Company, a no vote will be to disapprove. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the agreement is approved. Item number 14 is a grant between the Silas Brunson Library and the state of Connecticut in the amount of $18,340 for internet access and high-speed communications for public libraries. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number 14.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the grant, a no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the grant is approved. With respect to standing committees, the request is for refunds for tax overpayments in the amount of $9,495.64. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve the refunds for overpayments, a no vote will be to disapprove. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, the refunds are approved. With respect to item number four, Old Business, which is the amendment to the civil service ordinance. It's the amendment to the civil service ordinance, proposed amendment which would clarify that any violation of the Code of Ordinances is subject to the citation process, and it would permit the city to impose a fine of $250 on the owner of any motor vehicle who improperly fails to register that vehicle with the Connecticut Department of Motor Vehicles, except that the Public Act also provides a no fine is to be imposed on first-time violators who present the proof of registration subsequent to the violation but prior to the imposition of the fine. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Old Business, number four.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Alderman Markey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there someone on here that can speak to this? Because I have a question about the 90-day policy. As most people know, I work for the university, and we have students here on campus from out-of-state who have cars in-state for the whole year, which is more than 90 days. But they're not moving here. And I read through this, I saw nothing in there about that, which means we would put all the students, whether at Post, at UConn, in jeopardy of getting this $250 fine. And then you also have your snowbirds, which might live 300, one day more, six months and one day in Florida, and then here, so it's, again, it's a 90-day thing, so majority of time is down there. Is that addressed somewhere? Because I don't see it anywhere when I was reading this.
Would you like me to speak on that, Mr. President?
Yeah, I was just going to say, Alderman, do you have, go ahead.
The college campuses or college students were discussed at the state level, and we're not going to be touched. Other states do, by the way. You go to colleges in other states, you've got to change your license, unfortunately, and your registration. We're not going to do it up here. We do know the presence of Post, there's a high residency from New York that come into Post and use Post as a college. So, and again, in a snowbird, a snowbird will have a Florida license. The snowbird will be able to prove that they live so many months of the year in Florida. Now, of course, that's their word against, if our license plate readers are hitting them nine months out of the year, and they're saying they're down there six months, that's a problem. So, again, it's, no one's going after snowbirds, no one's going after students. It's mostly for those that enter the city, have three or four kids in our school system, are using our school systems, using most of our services, and, you know, are avoiding paying, purposely avoiding paying Waterbury taxes. So I'm pretty sure the snowbird lived in this city a long time and paid high taxes their whole life, so.
Thank you. I was really worried about the students, because they don't have the $250 sitting around with that most of the time, so. But thank you.
Are there any other questions on this item? No? Okay. Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve this civil enforcement ordinance as amended, a no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the ordinance is approved. With that, Alderman Brunelli, I'd entertain a motion to return to the regular order of business.
Don't move.
Alderman Lopez?
Second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, we're back in the regular order of business. The following items are on the consent calendar. Items one, two, and three are on consent to receive and place on file. Item four is on consent to approve the job spec for the watershed and reservoir supervisor. Item five is on consent to approve the job spec for the assistant projects manager. Item six was withdrawn. Seven is on consent to approve the agreement with the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services for the Office of Minority Grant Advancing Health Literacy for Improved Health Outcomes. Eight is on consent to approve the agreement with the Department of Health and Human Services for the Lead Hazard Reduction Grant and the Healthy Homes Supplemental Grant. Item nine is on consent to approve the three-year contract with Leyden Industries for paving and surface restoration for water-related excavation. Item 10 is on consent for the engineer and design agreement to provide design services for restoration and renovation to four of the city's fire stations. Item 11 is on consent to approve the construction contract for the 2021 sidewalk program. Item 12 is on consent to approve the sale of 2628 Yates Avenue. Item 13 is on consent to approve the professional service agreement between the city of Waterbury and National Water Main Cleaning Company. Item 14 is on consent to approve the grant agreement with the Silas Brunson Library in the state of Connecticut for internet access and high-speed communications. Item, the standing committee is on consent to approve refunds to taxpayers in the amount of $9,495.64. Item number, Old Business 3 is withdrawn, and item number four is on consent to approve the amendment to the civil enforcement ordinance related to auto registrations. Alderman, yes?
Could I move that we remove item seven, so that Alderman Lopez can vote on the rest of them? Because he had to recuse himself from that one when we were voting earlier.
Thank you. Good catch. So the motion then would be to approve the consent calendar as read, with the exception of item number seven. Thank you. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Don't move.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Okay. Motion having been made and seconded. Are there any other changes to the consent calendar? Alderman Zimmerman?
Not a change, Mr. President, but I have a quick question about received and placed on file, and this is pertaining to the declaration resolution for racism as a public health crisis. What is it, when we receive it on file, it just means that we acknowledge it, that it's been placed, and now it's going to be worked on by the diversity?
Means that we've received it, and we're not taking any action on it at this point. It's just there. It's just an acknowledgement that we've received it, the way we've received the other ones. And the expectation would be, on that particular issue, that these two commissions, both the Diversity Council locally, the State Commission, are by their very nature going to do some work. They're going to come up with recommended actions for the city and the state to take. And then we would consider whatever those actions are that are appropriate for the city of Waterbury at the time, that they are developed and referred to us in some mechanism. So that's what it would mean. But as far as that resolution goes, it's just an acknowledgement that it came to us from the CHRO, it was on the agenda, but further than that, nothing is going to happen with it at this point.
Thank you for clarifying me.
Okay. With that, the motion on the floor is to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no.
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, the consent calendar is approved. With respect to item number seven, the motion, I would entertain a motion to approve the agreement in the amount of $4 million with the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, Office of Minority Health Grant Advancing Health Literacy for Improved Health Outcomes. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number seven.
Motion having been made and seconded by, I believe, Alderman Weaver. Is there any discussion? Alderman Lopez?
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. President. I'd like to recuse myself of voting on this item.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Weaver?
I did not second it. I think it was Sandra.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy. The second was Alderman Martinez-McCarthy. So the motion having been made and seconded, Alderman Lopez recusing himself. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve item number seven, a no vote to disapprove. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously with one recusal from Alderman Lopez, and the agreement is approved. With that, there's no further business to come before this board. Anything for the good of the order? No? Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, I hope you all enjoy the rest of your summer, and we'll see you. I think we're back on our regular schedule, so we'll be back here early in September. Enjoy it. The weather should be nice for a little while, hopefully, and we'll see you soon. All those in favor of adjournings, bye-bye, saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we're adjourned. Take care.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Adios.
Bye.
Good night, Waterbury.